Number two, approval agenda.
Any changes?
Yes, we are, uh, we removed a few items. Go to number three, remove A. And then on the back page, number eleven and twelve.
Any other changes? Anybody else have any changes? Okay, I'm waiting for your approval.
Okay.
Call the roll.
Westy, Snella?
Yes.
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 Okay, number three, under B approved, South Marshes Street reconstruction project from three hundred five feet south of Prairie Avenue to First Street and authorize proceeding bids.
Second.
Call the roll.
Snella?
Yes.
Pitt?
Yes.
Snaystrum?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Okay, C, set up public hearing for proposed plan specifications, form of contract, estimate of costs on South Marshes Street reconstruction project from three hundred five feet south of Prairie Avenue to First Street for January twenty first, this will be two thousand thirteen, at seven P M.
I had a question.
Okay.
Is that the equivalent of three blocks, it's going to cost ninety dollars to pay three blocks, you might understand that right?
Seventy hundred and eighty feet, I think forty.
Well, it's about what, three hundred feet?
Three hundred feet, probably. So, yeah, it's ten, it's one, uh, block spot.
Those are long blocks there, it's between First or Paulson Mall.
Can you stop to look right at that?
It's for long.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. Call the roll.
Pitt?
Yes.
Snaystrum?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Westy?
Yes.
D approved, plan specifications, form of contract, estimate of costs for Dustrow Park Road and Court Avenue reconstruction project. Call the roll.
Hickman?
Yes.
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Westy?
Yes.
Snella?
Yes.
Okay, E, set up public hearing for proposed plans, uh, specifications, form of contract, estimate of costs on Dustrow Park Road and Court Avenue reconstruction project for January twenty first, two thousand thirteen, at seven P M. Call the roll. Call the roll.
Snaystrum?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Westy?
Yes.
Snella?
Yes.
Okay, four, report to standing committees, policy administration, Jerry, David. Public safety, transportation, Steven.
No reports.
Utility committee, Gary.
The only thing I want to bring up is, uh, and you see the P schedule, uh, for, uh, we get the city has to go out and use a camera. And there was a reason, the reasoning behind that is because it was abused. And it came to the utility committee, uh, recommendation from Public Works, uh, and we approved it that, uh, if, if in fact, a contractor needs help and it, and locates are not where they need to be, then the city will do it free of charge. But too many times, the contractors are not trying to do it themselves, they're just, uh, coming in and expecting the city to do all the hard work of the locates and then they just get down and do it. So, that was the purpose behind that, I thought I should explain that, I think that's a resolution that's going on too.
Yeah, isn't it consent?
But I will look through that so that in case someone had a question or didn't know what that was all about. That's it, thank you.
Economic Development, Viddy, Steven. Just one item, I'm going to turn it back over here.
As you know, I'm the, uh, representative for the city council of Central Iowa Expo. And, uh, I haven't given any reports recently on it, we have been working diligently to try to, uh, get that organization, uh, so it's operational and black, because it hasn't been. Uh, I can tell you that we're on the road to going there, we're getting there. Uh, and the next thirty to sixty days are going to be crucial, it appears to, uh, get some of our past due debts taken care of, uh, long past due debts. And, um, the, the existing board or the current board has worked diligently to, uh, get their arms around the, the expenses and to run it so that it can, it can maintain. And saying that, uh, the city, um, had a, had a, um, what am I trying to say? We paid for five, four years.
Agreement?
Agreement, word, thank you. And I think we paid five thousand dollars a year for, for four years, so we made a twenty thousand dollar amount that we paid to them, we paid our last amount last year.
Twenty thousand a year.
Twenty thousand a year.
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand. So anyway, we've made our last payment. Um, we're, we're at a point now where we are, uh, leasing the land out, we're not leasing, we're, we're getting more activities out there like Laser Fest, we're getting, we're going to be a country fest, there's going to be, uh, whether it's Hay Expo last year. But we're trying to really use that facility in the off years like it was originally designed to be. Uh, now, there's not going to be two hundred fifty thousand people at these events, but they don't have to be, it can still be bringing revenue in to pay those daily expenses and to pay for all of them, whatever, because there are major expenses all the time, utilities, water, whatever. To make a long story short, uh, there's four entities, uh, that are, are being asked to, uh, donate or, or ask for a, uh, contribution, donate a contribution. Uh, the city of Bloom is one, uh, Ames Convention and Visitors Bureau, uh, Des Moines Convention and Visitors Bureau, and Blue's Future. And, uh, guess what I'm asking tonight is if, uh, the city would be willing to, uh, pledge some funds for this current year. Uh, I don't want to do it on a five-year basis, and I, I'm not looking for, I say, I, we're not looking for, uh, a hundred thousand dollars. What, what I would ask for is for a ten thousand dollar amount, uh, that would be paid within the next few months. And I think it possibly could be paid out of hotel motel tax funding, because there were some funds left over, we left some fees in there for this past year. Now, um, I guess that's a long story, but I'll field any questions, I, I know I made it kind of vague, but if you've got questions, I'd be more than happy to answer and, um...
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
And I think for what it does for the, we've got to keep this thing going. But everything has to get this thing, we've got to keep it going. I think ten dollars, I don't think, ten thousand dollars is not a lot for what I think for what the city gets back, and I think it's fair enough.
One thing I did hesitate, or I did not, I failed to say is, uh, as you know, last year, if, if any of you were out there, uh, there was major road work done, uh, underground road work, uh, tiling, grading. Uh, when the weather clears this year, uh, DOT and Iowa State have combined because of the help through the state of Iowa, that all those roads are going to be hard serviced. All of them, which is a major, major undertaking and will increase the ownership of that facility briefly.
One thing I may add, uh, any action that you take tonight will be, um, reinforcement for us to bring back forward a resolution that you put on the next agenda, it would make it an official document. Again, if it is something you want to move forward, uh, it would be to give consent, ten thousand from hotel motel tax to Central Iowa Expo. So, feedback that I think what you're looking for tonight is in general, yeah, feedback from council and the courts.
Uh, one thing, well, I'm curious about two things. Uh, the first one is, there's still five and a half months left on current hotel motel, uh, taxes, so what is the balance in there that, uh, in the hotel motel?
The current cash balance is sixty-two thousand, uh, whatever, Steve, maybe eight thousand in the first two quarters, which are, are the biggest quarters. If I take the ninety-eight thousand and, um, estimate low on the last year, which are always really low, uh, if you can pay forty thousand, that's putting us, um, at a hundred and thirty thousand, and my estimate was only at a hundred and seventy, so we've got there.
Yeah, we're at twenty-three thousand. Because I know, you know, there's still five and a half months left, somebody else can come in, I just didn't want to eat it all up.
That's why I'm glad we can reserve for things like this.
My other one, other concern was, uh, have you heard any feedback from the other cities, are they going to get involved in this?
Um, I can, I can tell you that, uh, in talking to Person of Blue's Future tonight, uh, they are going to receive this tomorrow, receive this asking tomorrow, and they, uh, felt pretty strong that it was, that they were going to probably move forward and do it. Uh, Ames Convention and Visitors Bureau, I say there's probably about a ninety-five percent chance that they're going to do it, except, uh, the city of Des Moines or Des Moines Convention and Visitors Bureau, visitor, convention and visitors bureau. I don't have a good read on that. The, the person who will make that pitch or who will go talk with them is Julie Eeks, who is with the Ames Convention and Bureau, I think she's got a very good rapport with them, and I, I think she can get it taken care of, Luke, you can probably tell me better than that. I, I'd say it's, it's, I don't know what to give as a percentage of that.
The discussions I've had with Julie, director of CD for Ames, um, to me, she has been pretty optimistic.
They, they truly understand how much of an impact, they, they get tremendous impact on hotel hotel in Des Moines when, when they have, uh, the show, the big show. Now, the off year, not maybe quite as much, but they still get some things out of it, so, um, she felt pretty strong.
And one other thing, you asked about the cities, but even though the county did come up with a list of one of the assets, it should be understood that they are, on a monthly basis, they are making payments on the bond that helped make the project happen, which, so as far as input hours, uh, they are absolutely at the table and assisting rates.
Now, if you part of that excess, does the farm show?
There's a, there are signs out there that says persons available, does that, does that mean that, I don't know, the land is for sale, does that land belong to the Central Iowa?
Uh, it's a very big question. The, the parcels that are for sale are on the south side of the road, uh, that separates, uh, the farm Mexico from that, all that hay area, that's where the parcels, and that, those are privately owned, okay? The actual land that's owned by Central Iowa Expo is essentially the land that's inside the fenced-in area. Now, that's not a hundred percent true, because the administration building is not in that fenced area, but for the most part, the land owned by Central Iowa Expo is in the fenced-in area.
And that's currently owned.
Yes, it is, and, and that's, you know, that, that is, uh, that's one of the landowners, and he sold several parcels, he's got a business that he's sold out there that's, that, that auger company. The Westfield Auger, thank you. And, uh, so it's, it's bringing things in, uh, there's no question, there's, it's, it's impacting things, there's, there's no question about it. So whatever your intent is, you know, any other questions, uh, we just ask for the help, we can get, we appreciate whatever, if anything, we can do.
Why not have an impact on us?
I'm sorry, what was that?
I know that that has an impact on us, exactly, but it brings so many people, not just to that show, but to our hotel hotels, our restaurants.
Mayor, you just asked, did that require any action? I think that general feedback and, um, if, if this is something that you see as a positive, I think the most of what I've heard from the council is that's a positive, uh, direction to go, so we will put that in the form of a resolution and put that on the January twenty first.
I just hope that any action to the other entities understand that we're in favor of.
Because it's not on the agenda, I have a little bit of discomfort doing that, I prefer that it be on the agenda. But I think you've got a general sense for it, Stephen.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next up, uh, five, Building Fish, Let Higgins.
No report, John.
Um, library, Jamie.
No report.
No report. Uh, finance officer, Andrea.
No report.
City attorney, Jim.
No report.
Economic development, Director Beth.
No report.
Director of Parks, Public Works, John Rouse.
Sorry. Uh, just a couple things, I laid out a, a little spreadsheet of what we spent so far on storing the most last, uh, eleven and almost twelve inches of snow, cost us about thirty-six thousand dollars so far. It's not just that night of the snow, but we continue to scrape our roads, plow, pick up parking lots, stuff like that, and we're still yet to this stage to build out, scrape the roads, so, um, it's, it's, it was a hard snow, it melted and bonded really good to the pavement. So, uh, we're using the road grader to actually get down into black, so we're still out doing it. Um, one other thing is, last night, I was informed this morning that last night someone cut the padlock off the hydrant at the skating pond, left the hydrant running all night. Um, we don't know how much water was used, but it cooked a pretty big hole in the ice, so we had to close it, and which is too bad, because we've had a great year, one of the best years we've had in, well, quite some time. Uh, revenue-wise, participation-wise, it's, it's been fantastic, and unfortunately, this, uh, someone had to ruin it for everybody, so, uh, we had a little interview with Channel Thirteen, Dave Hyden, Sue Schwartz was also on the news, it was beyond tonight at ten. Um, Channel Thirteen was out there, Andy Bales was really upset, so I imagine that's going to be the bug in Andy's head, so, um, that's about it, any questions?
So they cut the...
They cut the, we have a chain around, there's a precess hydrant, just like in the farm yard, we have a chain around with a padlock on it, well...
They cut it?
Well, it was, it was not on there, so they had to cut it and chuck it, and they just left the hydrant running all night long, and it all drains down to the ice, and it's warm watered and, and melted a pretty good hole in the pond.
From the water plant, it looks like it could be about two hundred thousand gallons.
Wow.
That, uh, they need a pretty big pipe wrench to open that up, don't they?
Well, the padlock is pretty easy, but the, the, the chain around it is, uh, basics, I mean, yes, it's going to need some bolt cuttings.
No, I mean to open it up.
No, 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 it's a precess hydrant, like it's in a farm.
Oh.
It's just a red handle, and, because when you shut it, it drains the pipe to it, it's precess. So, no, it's just to cut that chain and pop it. I think it's out toward the, the sidewalk itself, so that might not be bad, every night, just go, it's that simple, just take a thing out and pop and shut, that's a good idea. Shut it off, I mean, it's a pain that you have to go do that part to cover your butt.
I think the padlock would take care of it.
Yeah, you think so, so, but, uh, yeah, anything else? All right, that's it, thank you.
Uh, next up, utilities, Senator Roy.
Yeah, I have two items, uh, I'd like your approval for a water system evaluation. This would be the first step of several steps coming through the years. It'll provide a plan addressing present day and future needs of our aging water distribution system. Uh, future steps would be G I S, uh, computer model for mapping the distribution system, identifying capital improvement pro, projects and costs, water loss effec, efficiency, energy efficiency, and overall master plan for the whole water system. Aunt Whitmer will be the project manager, she's from full engineering, she's from Wisconsin, she's had a lot of, uh, experience, had a lot of different studies, doing distribution studies, but the cost of that would be ninety-eight hundred dollars.
The reason that went up is because she will be here, exams on, okay, yep, boots on, John.
We're going to have to do it soon, I might get a new team.
That's right.
Because somebody's going to say, oh, you're done, well, then I would make a motion that we do that.
Second. Call the roll.
Ray?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Westy?
Yes.
Snaystrum?
Yes.
And the other thing is, Arlen couldn't be here tonight, but Arlen Wilmann at the water treatment plant will be recognized for twenty-five years of service.
Okay, next up, city engineer, Wayne.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I included packets, um, traffic counts that were taken, we discussed, or brought up at the last meeting, the, uh, traffic data on a five mile drive. If DOT did do a traffic count out there, so I did include it, um, real quickly, the, from two thousand three, ten years now, traffic's gone up six percent on the gravel portion of five mile drive. Hundred thirty-eight vehicles per day, is what their average annual daily traffic is. Uh, for reference, South Mar, or South Marion Street, the gravel portion is a hundred ten vehicles per day, so there are more than that. Uh, Store Street north of Twenty Second, that's a hundred forty vehicles per day, careful of that. Uh, it's not an extreme amount of traffic, it is substantial, I mean, it's nothing minor. Uh, problem's going to be if they want to do an improvement, any improvement out there are going to increase the traffic, and they're going to increase the speed of that traffic. Uh, if we were to move forward with any improvement, we're likely going to have a major reconstruction, probably acquiring riderway, uh, changing the profile, making it wider, making it safer. For the time being, I think, uh, entering recognition, we'll leave it at that, the mantra is, uh, in a few years, when it's more developed, we'll, we'll address it.
Well, we did have an individual that showed up at the meeting talking about that, uh, I had one of the residents on that area that was at the meeting with them, uh, that actually lives on that road again, they get the exact opposite sentiment, that they have no interest in seeing that road paid, understanding that it would be an increase in traffic on that.
And isn't it, says that road has never been paid, that the homeowners, uh, they have like eighty percent of the cost of that, and that's a...
If you did an assessment, that is potential.
That's what we've done, pretty much, a quarter down.
Now, I, I will say that part of our discussion about this highway grid corridor, sometime in the future, if we're talking about interchanges, uh, if there's some type of a frontage road that is needed, it may get to a point where there is a requirement to, uh, for...
I think a bridge is more expensive to replace, isn't it?
Yeah, I would think we'd, we'd probably put a culvert in there, decided I didn't put a couple of twin box culverts, probably do a make for it, cheaper. Uh, one other item I want to discuss, Casey's was approved, the site plan, last meeting was, uh, one of the requirements was some dollars inputted for traffic improvement. They're going to move forward with just giving the city money upfront, currently seventy-five hundred dollars, and not be able to increase requirements, uh, so, giving up any of that, we're reporting that.
They're just a, what a letter or statement that we have to sign off saying that we wouldn't have sent additional dollars.
That they satisfied their site requirements.
Director of Public Safety, go scare. No reports.
We're also nice on the second.
Yeah, it's not long. They're really good. City administrator, Luke.
No reports, John.
Whoa.
Speedway.
Oh, my God. Pass more time now?
No, no, absolutely not.
Does have some special graphs or, for the utility, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just saying, yeah.
Number six, consent agenda, are there any items on the consent agenda you'd like removed, discussed separately, if not any, a motion approved. Call the roll.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Westy?
Yes.
Snella?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Snaystrum?
Yes. Okay, number seven, ordinance is, uh, consider waiver of second consideration of ordinance twenty-one eighty-eight, Vision Bank Cedar Point Gulf rezoning R three to C one and move to third consideration. Second. Call the roll.
Westy?
Yes.
Snella?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Snaystrum?
Yes.
Okay, B, consider adoption of ordinance twenty-one eighty-eight, Vision Bank Cedar Point Gulf rezoning R three to C one. Call the roll.
Snella?
Yes.
Pitt?
Yes.
Snaystrum?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Okay, number eight, mayor's comments, I want to thank the fire department, uh, for inviting us to their awards banquet last night, very, very nice, and I appreciate you having us, and Justin did a great job, it was nice to see him. You weren't invited?
Play the post office, I said, if you're going to have to...
I'm going to have to have a fire chief.
Uh, number nine, councilman comments, the comments, excuse me.
I just wanted, uh, tell John, I, uh, I think you guys did a great job on, on, yeah, snowstorm. I know it was tough conditions, and, you know, I, I had some people comment to me that they didn't think that you got out quick enough, they mostly don't even understand what you're talking about. And all they had to do was drive to one of the other communities around the area, and they realized that, uh, you know, how hard you work downtowns, in, in residential districts too, but downtown, to have things opened up, so when people came, it was great to go, and, uh, that was, that was a good job, because that was a tough one.
And the council members?
I just have one question on Roy, how much water did you save?
We figured close to two hundred thousand gallons.
Just to comparison, I pulled up a report Luke sent us last night on utility, that's almost double what our water loss rate right is right now. So we just did a whole year of water loss and doubled it, because we did two hundred thousand gallons, so that's what we now have gone. So on top of the damage, and by the way, the, before all this happened, getting, I was getting a raid reviews bill.
And they're a nice store, they're a good team.
And now we've got that on top of it.
How's that work, uh, builder? Jim, if we find who did that, uh, that's, that's, uh...
They would have to make restitution of that, uh...
It's very...
We didn't make a place report today.
Yeah, good. So, Sam, a lot of money, if it went into a store and stores, right?
Do you have any idea what kind of amount that'd be? That'd be nice to put that out in paper, here's another, there's a damn, uh, something to do with something like that, yeah.
I, I bring it up, because it's also just the damage, but also the water loss, which would all pay for, and the utility companies are really hard to determine the water loss rate. And we were counting on having a full figure, a year of numbers, to show the water loss cut, and now we got this huge red spike down there.
And the council members?
One of the, I'd like to bring up, I had a, I'm on the, uh, environmental committee for, uh, League of Cities. We had a, uh, phone conference call, about a three and a half hour conference call, and I kind of, I gave a little information to Roy about, that's, that's why I was giving you this, in regards to what's coming down the pipe, uh, as to what, what our wastewater can be when it leaves. And it's really getting to a point, uh, EPA is getting involved because of the runoff, the nitrates and whatever that's in there. And they're going to start coming down really hard on the cities, and, um, League of Cities is trying to lawsuit, there's already a lawsuit by a certain group, League of Cities, I think is going to get involved in it and try to block it, uh, because of what they're saying, the percentage, and I, I apologize, I don't have it in front of you, but it's, it's absolutely unbelievable. What they're saying, that the, uh, percentage of some of these chemicals are when they leave, and the dollars that are involved, um, it, it was people from all the states in this phone conference, and, and I mean, it was just, it's not even close to being realistic. But only reason I'm bringing, or the main reason I'm bringing it up is, uh, I don't think we can lose sight that there's going to be a point in time where we're probably going to have to invest some funds at that treatment plant again, just because we're going to be forced to. There's going to be something, and as I get more information, I'll get it to you, but, uh, it's, it's basically, there's a name, it's called the Mississippi something, but there, because of all of, everything that comes in from the Midwest, is what they're, they're laying on. And it's, Iowa, of course, is right at the top of it. And they're talking maybe five percent of the, the dead zone that, that happens in the Gulf of Mexico, five percent is contributed to wastewater plants. They're going to make the wastewater plants spend millions and millions of dollars to remove nitrogen and phosphorus.
They say what the other ninety-five percent is total, right?
Yeah.
I'd just like to point that out too, the reason, the reason they say that five percent is because we are forced by law to keep that on how much goes out.
That's right.
So because of the numbers we provided them, they know where five percent of it came from, but there's no comment on the ninety-five percent.
So is any of that money you spent, Roy, that was a million for self or two or three, is any of that part of what they're talking about now?
Is any of that part of what they're talking about now?
Actually, we're removing ammonia nitrogen, which is, if you drive by Ames on thirty-five, you smell that all the time, okay, they're not removing ammonia nitrogen. We're removing the ammonia nitrogen, but now they want us to dig deeper into the nitrogen cycle and get all of the nitrogen out. So that means you have to have more tanks, you have to have more blowers, or you gotta have a bunch of air to it. So you got, instead of twelve thousand dollars a month electrical cost, you're paying thirty thousand dollars a month. And adding a million-dollar tank here, and a million-dollar tank, it's just ridiculous. Well, the verdict's not in yet, but it's, it's, it's out there, and they're pushing really hard. And I, and I think before it's all said and done, it's, some of it will have to go back to the agricultural industries. It'll have to. They're, they're saying that that's where it's at, but.
Senator, we've been, we've been, the cities, we've talked about this before, but with cities, everybody's just gonna have to say no. I mean.
And that was pretty much brought up during the conference.
You know, and you know, there's, there's gonna come a time when, where the people, the, the cities are just gonna have to get together and say, no, thank you. And.
And you know, Peter, that's a good reason why we are, we join the memberships that we do.
Yes.
There's no, we've talked about it before.
How many cities are created in that legal realm?
I can't answer that, I can't give that number, but I can answer.
I mean, it's a lot.
It's a lot, yeah, it's a lot.
Didn't somebody send the EPA because of all the?
I just read where a city, and they won.
Yeah, well, because every time they do something, then the EPA changes whatever the rules were. And so I think that, I think the cities was doing that.
The league is, I was gonna say, there's a, there's a lawsuit right now from the League of Cities. Not even about this, about something previously that they were trying to shove down everybody's throat. So this one, this one was a pretty important, they called a special meeting. It's, we can just, it's a good example of why it's important to be on the League of Cities. I know it's expensive, but they work for us, and I, I think it's something we, it's, it's what we're. Thank you, no more, that's it.
That's right. Any other Council comments? I just wanna, I have something, I wanna thank everybody who either came to the first annual Mayor's Charity Gala or donated. I appreciate it, it was a great party. After all our expenses, we're still gonna, will be donating somewhere around twenty-four hundred dollars to Shaggy Topps, so. Next year, we'll pick a different charity, so it's, it's fun, and money's going to Shaggy Topps, so. Any public comments? Yes. Sue?
Okay, we worked with the State Con this weekend and saw all that kids that came down there and had such a good time, and they were so good about, you know, thanking us and everything else. There were people there from Nevada, Huxley, Woodward, all these different towns, and they said, it was costing them so much to go someplace else to get any recreation. So they appreciated this so much. So I don't see why, if we can give ten thousand dollars to the Farm Progress Show, why we can't put more money into protecting what we've got and trying to prevent the vandalism that we've had in the cemetery, in the park, in the buildings and everything else. I think we need to be putting money into that. I think we need to look at more, having some kind of youth programs for the youth in this town. I don't know, I can't understand why kids would do damage like this, and that if they are holding a grudge against something, I don't know, but I think we need to put money into preventing it. Have something that, some kind of cameras that can catch this and prosecute the people. We need to put, put some money into our own town. That's my, my opinion. And I went down and saw the damage today, and it was unbelievable. And it was, it was so beautiful yesterday.
Any other comments?